Hold, wintery night. So really quickly, I just, before we begin with the official meeting, there were just some confusion, I think, of some boards and committees. So I want to make sure we got another one out for you and to make sure you know where you are at for your committees. And so I know we went, let's say, yes, I know we went over it pretty briefly, the one day we had gotten all those boards, but just review it. And again, if you're reviewing it and you're like, oh, hey, this may not work for me, please just let me know. That way we can try to find another council member to do that for you. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, Brandy. That's all I got.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, our first item is with regard to a brief conversation about interim topics. We have a deadline upon us. We're in as a, as an organization, we can submit interim topics to either the legislature or WHAM as ideas for study over the off-season, as far as legislative season is concerned. And so I was hoping we could get a few ideas from you that you'd like to see move forward in that capacity. I know that we, we have heard, you know, since particularly since the dinner, of a couple ideas in that respect. But nonetheless, if we can get your, your green light to move forward with a few, we'd be happy to take that ball.
He just wants some suggestions tonight?
That would be great. Yes, that you guys feel good about, and we'll, we'll take it from there.
Any suggestions? Michael?
I do, Carter, you kind of, you kind of mentioned the massage therapy. So I've kind of been, I've heard from a lot of the massage therapists, I've talked to many of them on the phone. And I, some of whom have experience in other states. And so one of the things that I think would be helpful from the state perspective is some oversight in terms of, you know, a lot of states have a massage therapy board. I don't know if it's licensing necessarily, but I don't know what that all entails. But anyway, I just felt like that, that it's a group of therapists. It's kind of a professional oversight committee or group. So as well as have some statewide statute that might help us.
Absolutely. Others?
Yeah, I'm just going to see if they've got, if you've got any ideas of housing-related issues to bring to them. They had some of those on the docket. Plus interim, and it didn't go anywhere. So see if there's any of those that are worth revisiting. And similarly, the mental health initiatives, you know, as we continue to see the expense related to those issues accumulate within our own budgets, I think it's in our best interest for them to be taking a serious look at some of those things.
Jen, I know you just walked in. We're taking some ideas for interim topics to have a conversation.
I read the memo.
Perfect.
Caught it. Sorry. I was helping up.
No, 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 you're good. Any other suggestions?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Pat.
So and I guess I look for Carter's opinion and what WHAM's thinking, but hard to tell where we're going to end up on property tax at this point, but major discussion point. So would it be wise to put some sort of interim topic in as, as a collective of WHAM on other revenue generating ideas that the state might have? Because we're solely reliant on whatever direction the, the state wants us to, to move forward. We thought the six cent relief would be helpful, but obviously, I mean, we thankfully were successful on four items, but four items not. But there's already been pushback. It didn't go anywhere, but I'm guessing that I think if I remember right, it's sent file 212. Might have been a house bill, I'm not sure, but that they would have restricted and basically gotten rid of that portion of the six cent and then restricted it further by cutting it back to a two-year cycle instead of a four-year cycle. Which I'm guessing, I've been told, I've heard that they're going to put that through as an interim study. So should there be something on our side of things on, what would you like us to do?
Thanks, Pat. Want to say anything about that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I think that's a very appropriate discussion point. Good news is, it does sound like there will be an interim study as it relates to taxation overall. And perhaps some of the reform that might need to take place. WHAM will be at the table as it relates to that conversation, as I understand it. And that's certainly something we will advocate for. But you know, if indeed council would like to have us run with that item as well, it, it certainly wouldn't be out of line in my estimation.
Yeah. Any others? Any other thoughts? Yeah, Kyle.
Is there a deadline that we are working against?
I've got it. I did it this week to do WHAM or something.
So if you have others, email that okay, Carter.
That'd be just fine. Absolutely.
I think, I think the deadline, Mr. Mayor, is the 21st. That they have, have to be submitted. So.
Thanks, Pat. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, vegetation abatement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, Counselors, about a year ago, we had a conversation on this very issue. You know, updating council as it relates to what efforts were footed with regard to dealing with overhanging trees, site blocking, foliage, and those kinds of things. We are at that point now where we would like to move in a direction that would behoove you to be aware of, in that we, we really need some help pertaining to the volume of work that is out there and in conflict with, with your ordinances. And so I asked Liz and Amber to be here tonight to walk us through some of the implications of that program and in advance of us getting underway for that level of enforcement. And so if it's okay with you, we'll have them come on up.
Perfect.
Well, two council, we have five different related topics. Illustrated these, mowing, littering, these, maybe as the years will break.
I can't hear.
checked up invoicing as such. One of the topics, as the city manager said, had to do with the vegetation. Issues that overhang trees, overhanging trees across sidewalks and streets, not only impacting citizenry, but a lot of the public services work. And so Amber and her team did kind of an assessment over the past several months of where the primary issues are. And also talked with our parks team, which is here's me too. Amber was asked by Carter to kind of step through what our process is. We see an overhanging tree, what we do with our citizens, a public engagement, public communication standpoint, and how the process works from there as we get into this plan to contract with private parks. So Amber's going to take you through that, see a bit about how the code enforcement team works in these situations. So briefly, what we do violation, we send the letter out and get some correspondence going with the property owners. They get 15 days to fix that situation. If they have a sidewalk construction or a low hanging branch over a sidewalk or a hedge that's obstructing the sidewalk. Generally speaking, our arborists or tree companies in town will book them out, but they're booking out, so it's eight, 12 weeks out. That doesn't solve our problem. So we decided the best way to do this is to reach out to these arborists and say, we just need to get this one violation ended. So we've talked to some companies in town. At this point, at least four companies that are willing to entertain going into contract with us. We would still post it and see if there's other companies that are willing to do this. And we say, hey, we've got a citizen that's got a code violation. Typically, they get 15 days to remedy the situation. If they can't do it as a private citizen on their own, then we can send an arborist over there to remedy the situation at a fixed rate. So they would just fix the violation. They wouldn't prune the whole tree. They wouldn't have to do this bedding out. It's 12 weeks down the road, which is just too long to wait. We have a situation that's a code violation. Want to get it fixed because it can become a safety issue. Or any other system want to use a sidewalk for that street. So that's really what kind of the brain butter is of this. We want to fix that violation sooner than later. If we go with kind of using the same fee schedule that parks went into on size of the branch and what we need to do, then we're not kind of a guessing game. Really using a fixed kind of database on what we're going to charge. We're only going to fix the one problem. Now, if that owner wants to contract with that contractor down the road to prune the entire tree up, that's what we're, that's up to them. But what we're doing and by going in with this arborist or any of these arborists that we have a contract with, we're ensuring that we're trimming that tree to a healthy weight versus me just hiring one of our other mowing contractors and just is going out there and trimming the branch and introducing disease into that tree and causing more problems than we have. So we want to ensure that we're getting that tree trimmed properly. We're not introducing disease. And we're mitigating that violation and getting that tree to, because ultimately that's what we want. But we're doing that within a 15 to 20 day period versus a 12 week period. So that's really what our goal is with this kind of introduction to you guys. As long as you're willing or amenable to it, we'd like to continue into some talks with these tree companies and seeing who's willing to do it and start negotiating some contracts with them. To maybe by spring, get some contracts under our belt. I would, I would like and prefer a two-year contract with them so we can get them doing it. They're very, very positive thinking. They know that I would be doing a short timeline. I call up a tree company on a rotational basis. I would like them out there within five to seven days period. If they can't make it, they need to tell me. I would just go to the next company under contract with me. So we get that, that dangerous situation mitigated sooner than later.
The cost is passed on.
It would be passed on, yeah, to the homeowner, to the property.
Not us.
Yeah. It's the same, same idea as our mowing, right? So we would do the mowing, we'd pay our contractor, but then we pass that on to the property owners. It's the same kind of, same kind of ideas.
Questions for Amber or Liz?
Quick question. Amber, does that, does that include like vegetation that's obstructing, like say a stop sign or street sign?
Yeah, and that's obviously more of a hazard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. And if we do have something that's that immediate of a public safety hazard, sometimes we will actually call and see if cars is available immediately to mitigate that as soon as we can. If they're not, then these guys, like I said, I went talking to them briefly. They're willing to, you know, go take care of something more immediately. I mean, if we've got a stop, stop sign obstructed, that's not something we want to leave, you know, and that's something that we can absorb our costs on.
Thank you.
Pat, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I missed part of the beginning. So is this mostly over the main thoroughfares that we're looking versus side streets?
It would be on private property, overhanging sidewalks or a street. If you just, because the requirements are eight feet above a sidewalk or 15 feet above a street, and it would be trees within a private property sector. Throughout, yeah, throughout Casper.
Okay, not, not just like K Street, H Street.
No.
Durban, the major.
Correction. No, no, it would be throughout all of Casper.
Okay. And then your thought process again was on splitting the cost with the property owner?
The, the cost would be passed on to the property owner, just like any of our violations, mowing, junk, litter.
Okay. Was there any thought, is it possible to use any of the arborist grants that the city was successfully getting?
That grant money. I believe that grant money was set aside for a specific use, not for code enforcement.
Okay.
Kate, did you want to say anything?
Mayor Council, Mr. Sweeney, I'm Katie Hallicam, the City Arborist. And in regards to the grant, you're speaking of the Branch Across Casper Grant. And I know that you attended one of our meetings and I appreciated that. Right now, the Branch Across Casper Grant falls under the Inflation Reduction Act. And so that grant is currently frozen. And our understanding is it will be frozen for at least 90 days. I'm very hopeful that it won't remain frozen. But that's where we're at right now. So there aren't any funds available at this time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, ladies. Appreciate the information. It's been a while since we had this conversation. So could you please remind me? In the case of a, you know, a very elderly woman that would like to keep her yard, you know, trimmed up, but is just physically unable, potentially financially. up, but is just physically unable, potentially financially unable, can you please remind me what options are available to her?
For mowing or trimming trees or just in general?
Yeah, just anything. You know, I think for willful ignorance or like intentional neglect, there needs, there needs to be a painful experience to curb that behavior, but in the case that someone is willing and would otherwise take care of the property, but is for one reason or another unable, I just don't remember what avenues, if any, were available to them, would hate to penalize that 80-year-old woman that just can't get to it.
And we've had, reached out to, Rotary has assisted us in times of need, a few times actually in that, and we've had some other groups that have reached out to us that have offered those, those opportunities to help the elderly. We've been very lucky with, we haven't had too many of those instances. Typically, it has been negligence of property owners that just haven't.
In the case, we do run across that lady, though, we'll bring it to our Monday Club and do the hand raise and get her taken care of.
Yeah, or to the Wednesday morning.
Yep.
That's good, thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Katie, thanks for coming up. I know you didn't want to, but thank you.
Thanks for forcing me.
Appreciate it, Katie. All right, let's move on. Fire safety.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, we have an opportunity to obtain a grant from Firehouse Subs, which is one of the most, a business like that would do this, in the amount of approximately $45,000. We wanted to make sure you were comfortable with what this entails, and so for that, I would like the chief to come up and walk us through it a little bit, and make sure you're comfortable in our pursuit of these dollars.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this tonight. Your approval to apply for Subs Foundation Grant, protective equipment for the Bay Area Public, as you saw in the memo, a tragic reasoning to have this type of going for firefighters was lax at the end of work. Part of the firefighters were trapped in a 44, and they were forced to jump out on the ground, two died, one later died, injuries, three sustained by changing orders. This is what I'd love to give for our personnel to avoid this type of tragedy happening here in Casper.
Any questions, concerns? Everybody okay with it? Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, Counselors, we are proposing the pursuit of the creation of another local assessment district in partnership with the neighbors in the West Ridge neighborhood. Council is aware that we've applied this model in a number of ways in the past, certainly the Fort Casper neighborhood is prime example of that, and in more recent memory, West Ridge, of course, Coates Road, actually, was a much smaller example. The context that I'd like you to remember about LADs is that this is absolutely a partnership opportunity, wherein the city, with its capital dollars that you approve, will work on streets and obligations that the city would otherwise have, and it's responsibility in partnership with the neighbors to the project, in accordance with what the ordinances dictate about what the neighbor's responsibility would be in, in the same work environment, which is typically the private laterals as well as the sidewalks in front of their homes. We wanted to give you this update in that we are starting public communication on this, on this matter, and for that, I've asked Mr. Brower to walk us through some of the other brief details.
Mayor, Counselors, this is a continuation of the planning for the entire West Ridge area for an LAD and the second LAD. So we've sent out a fairly lengthy information letter to all the residents, explaining to them how the LAD works. The idea that the city comes in and paves the street, replaces aging water mains, aging sewer mains, it's interesting the difference between water and sewer, because water, the city owns up to the curb stop, which is, the name implies, is right behind the curb, and, but for sewer, the homeowner's responsible for the sewer all the way out to the main. So the LAD portion of this is primarily sidewalks and those sewer services, and that number was around $350,000. I apologize, I don't have a committed memory how much the asphalt paving and water and sewer was. The other one that's important, we held a public meeting last Thursday night, I believe it was Thursday night, I was unable to attend, but there were about 20 people in attendance, which is a great turnout for a public meeting, and asked a lot of questions, and from Jolene and Alex, all of the comments from the public were very positive, excited about the opportunity for improving their street, their neighborhood, and their involvement in the project. And again, the repayment of the money that they have for their sidewalk, based on linear footage and their sewer service, is over, I think it's a 20-year period, gets applied to the property at a lower interest rate, so it's a favorable way for them to get their whole neighborhood improved, and it's a model that we certainly have queued up in several other locations throughout town, where we see the need for improvements in local streets and local neighborhoods. That'd be glad to address any questions you might have.
Questions for Tom.
A lot of questions, Tom, but I'll email you with this, but in the past, we've had, we've had the struggle to contact some folks, property owners who are not necessarily residents. So if it goes to the, and I know you're probably all over that, but I can email you about it, just like somebody's a renter, they're not necessarily homeowner, who pays the taxes, so, but it's a.
Mayor, Counselor, please, yeah, if you could email me, I'll relay that. I know one of the people that was there actually owned two properties in that neighborhood that were rentals.
And he did get notified?
And he got notified, and he showed up at the public meeting.
Okay.
So, but again, I think it's very important that we do the crosscutters, so we hit the tenants and the landlords in these notifications, even though the tenants wouldn't necessarily be on board for the, carrying the cost of that, I think just keeping them in the loop, knowing that construction is coming, and the nature and scope of that work would be important, so.
Yeah, it kind of comes down to.
I'll make myself a note, but I'll wait for your email.
Who pays the tax bill?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that was just info for us. Okay, we've only got a couple minutes, but anything on the agenda for you, Carter?
Nope, I don't think so.
Okay, any questions about it? Yes?
I'm not worried so much about like Firehouse Subs, but we're approving a couple Homeland Security grants, giving chief authorization to move forward. Is there any concern at this point that any funding, I don't know how the WHAM office of Homeland Security has the resources for their grants, I don't know if they're dependent, if it's contingent upon federal resources, but I'm just really wary about accepting federal money right now. I just want to make sure we wouldn't be left holding the bag if, you know, we apply for a grant, maybe move forward on work that would be covered by a grant, with the expectation we're going to be reimbursed, you know, I just don't know how that timeframe works, if it's applying for reimbursement after the fact, or if they front-load the grant money and we work off of it, but just want to, you know, sketch it out with us, potentially holding the bag in cases where we're relying on federal money to get stuff done.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, I share your reticence, and the reality is, we have fibrous relationships with federal agencies throughout the organization. Homeland Security is one. The frustrating thing is, each grant is relatively unique, even though they all have DNA from the same parent company, in terms of not only things you got to do to get the money, but the responses that we're getting into, as far as the level of comfort each agency has pertaining to each of these dollars. So our modus operandi will be that we will move forward with small expenses relating to these grants where we can, so that we can kind of test the waters in terms of what the reimbursements look like and so on, wherein if we get, you know, no communication back and/or no reimbursements, we won't be out any vast sums of money before we abandon ship, so to speak, on whatever program that we're concerned about. So we're going to continue, in most cases, unless we're told by our contacts to cease and desist, like you heard from Ms. Hallic tonight, and I would suggest that the grant you're approving and the agreement you're approving this evening, we feel are feasible.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add, so I would echo the city manager's comments, and as we move forward incrementally, we'll be continually monitoring legal developments, whether it's in the courts or at the federal level, that may shed more light on, you know, the ultimate fate of some of these. So the idea is to not be frozen as municipality, but move forward in a very prudent way, minimizing any risk that we might have.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
Are we having an executive session tonight?
We are. Did you want to join us?
Well, it's possible, and maybe the IT, Carter, could work on that during regular session, if possible. I forgot about that, sorry.
Call him the nice Carter.
The nice, the nice Carter, that's exactly right.
Yeah, I think we can try to figure it out for you, Pat.
Thank you.
All right, let's head on out.